It's all in one place, in one document. And we're going to, anyone, we're going to hear whatever people, whatever relevant people have to say about this application, and we're going to determine what to do on the basis of, on the basis of the application and the circumstances. So.
A point of clarification, does that mean that previous testimony is not applicable?
It's not applicable.
Thank you.
But if, it is all on tape, and the tapes can be, could probably be resurrected and played to get it back on the record.
Got it.
Mr. Corcoran.
Thank you very much, Mr. Whiteside. Edward Corcoran, on behalf of the applicants, the Oldfield family and their nursery, which has submitted a new application for special permit under the zoning bylaw that was approved last May at town meeting, dealing with the landscaping, landscape business use. I don't know what the specific section of the bylaw is, as it has been written in, but it is the, the new bylaw that was approved last May. I'm pleased to be here on behalf of Maggie and Josh Oldfield, and look forward to engaging the board with discussion. This is, there is a new application. I worked hard to keep it as simple as possible. It may or may not have achieved that goal, but I think there are, it is, at the end, it's sifted down. It is, in fact, a fairly simple, straightforward application to allow the landscaping use that had previously existed on the site to be reintroduced at the site at 270, the primary site at 270 Hillside Street. There are several parcels involved that the family and the LLC own together. I think there was a, perhaps a preliminary item. I received yesterday a memorandum from Matt Dunn on behalf of Messrs. Rowe and Johanning, questioning whether or not Oldfield Family LLC and Thayer are the proper applicants. I have submitted a responsive memorandum today. I emailed it. I think everybody has copies. I have additional copies as well. And quite simply, as I read the bylaw, it simply says that the planning board may grant a special permit for a landscaping business on such lot or lots, provided that the applicant or applicants or their predecessors in interest on that date, July 12, 2012, held a special permit or use variance issued by the Board of Appeals with respect to that lot. That's simply as I read that, precatory language, that is a ticket for entry. The applicants or their predecessors in interest had to own the property and had to operate, and had to have a, a special permit with respect to the premises in 2012. The Oldfields owned the property, and Margaret Oldfield, who is Maggie's mother, and the children pursuant to the permits owned, operated, had permits to operate on that property. Oldfield Family LLC and Thayer Nursery are successors in interest, and they are related to what was previous, to the previous ownership, and they have the right to apply. So, it's fairly simple and straightforward.
All right. We hear your rebuttal, but we will hear from Mr. Dunn later on, and he can, he can set forth his argument, and we may have some questions for you.
So, I just thought I would address that up front. With respect to that, I'd like to spend a little bit of time with the conditions of And highlight a couple of things in the application. I'll do that. There was one, essentially one new and fundamental piece of information that was provided with the new material, and that is a table that's entitled "2012 Volumes of Material," that I think is fundamental, is how much material was Thayer Nursery receiving in 2012, and what, in terms of their landscaping, through the overall use of the property. The property does encompass nursery, agriculture, and, and landscaping business. They received in 2012 a total of 3,300 cubic yards of nutrimulch. That's one of their big things. They received a total of 55 deliveries to the property with respect to that over the course of about 40 weeks. That pro, a portion of that nutrimulch is delivered to customers, a portion is sold in smaller quantities at retail to customers who come to the site, and a portion of that is spread on the property itself as part of the nursery. Penlock mulch, 1,000 cubic yards, playground trip chips, 350 cubic yards, loam, nutrisoil, all as identified on the table. And separately, they have sold since the '60s firewood, both for delivery from the premises and for a purchase in smaller quantities at the site. They're currently limited to, to selling for smaller quantities at the site, and they deliver from off-site location in Canton. Yes.
Just wanted to check, it doesn't actually say that in the application that that was 2012, so you're confirming that those are the 2012 volumes?
Those are 2012 volumes. I think, my understanding as I read the, the, the bylaws, that the baseline was 2012.
It is, it just wasn't specified as such. I just want to clarify that.
Well, thank you for that. So, firewoods are broken down in terms of cords, the balance of the, of the material broken down in terms of cubic yards. They are delivered in varying sized trucks. The nutrimulch, the firewood are delivered in large 18-wheel trucks with enclosed boxes. Other materials are delivered in smaller vehicles. And the total number of deliveries to the site during each of the seasons is identified. Nutrimulch, for example, 55 deliveries is the largest set of deliveries. The firewood at 50 during the firewood season, or starting and leading up through the firewood season, at 50. And it identifies a, so the average of deliveries per week, relatively small, and occasionally maximum deliveries per week, so that at the start of the, of the season, they may receive up to four deliveries per week of mulch, nutrimulch, as they're sort of storing up and stocking, and then will periodically be refilling as they go. So, the total, over a 40, excuse me, a 40-week period, they're really averaging somewhere between, somewhere slightly less than two deliveries per week. It's about a half a delivery a day. So, when you break it down completely, there are a total of, if you take firewood out, there were a total of 203 deliveries of the combined materials. Over that 40-week period, averaged about one delivery per day. Some days, there would be more than one, other days, there would be none, but it was an average of one delivery to the site per day. So, 203 deliveries divided by 40 weeks comes out to approximately one delivery per day. The firewood, 50 deliveries divided by 31-week period, it's actually point three, oh, the same timeframe, is 1.6 deliveries per week again. Early in the season, they might have four to stock up inside the barn, and then weeks where there would be no deliveries at all, or perhaps one delivery. So, the maximum deliveries would be occasional, and so, and they would only be ordering and restocking as necessary in accordance with the time. Other materials we've previously provided, but gave a list of the vehicles 2012, those vehicles remain the same. They have not changed. There's a schedule of expected replacement that's included, identified with the vehicles. So, with that, I'd like to do is spend a little bit of time with the plan, and I'll, I think the easiest thing to do in this room, I think it's easier to work with these paper plans as opposed to do any sort of PowerPoint, because it's very difficult, it's more difficult to see on the monitor than it is in this room. So, and I will, so this is the existing conditions plan prepared by DeSalle and Burke. This is a plan that is essentially the same since last year, when we were preparing and showing plans for the town meeting process. Modified in December because it was, there was some additional infill with respect to description of the buildings, which correspond to the building descriptions in the application, location of lights shown in red, and whatnot. So, the closest building to any lot line is the rear of the wood barn, which is on the southerly lot line, north, essentially this way towards Hillside Street. Southerly lot line is here. The Pam Lepore family owns this large lot. To the south, Cole, Johanning and Rowe, and Tevens own the three lots that, but on the easterly side, on Parkwood Drive, and then Hillside Street and Forest Street as shown. The primary entrance to the property, really the only real entrance to the property itself is off of, is a curb cut off of Forest Street with a driveway in to a gravel entryway, parking area. There's a nursery stock area to the left, as you command, that's on the corner of Hillside and Forest. Josh Oldfield lives at 24 Forest Street, which is this lot within the broader square. Their sister lives in 270, single family, here, which its own driveway. Their sister is not involved in the business. She's separate, but she does live here. And then Maggie lives, and their mother live across the street, separate houses at 237 and 217, and they own the property that's to the rear. So, the buildings include a barn with display areas inside, a garden shop, which is where they primarily operate their sales. They have a cash machine, a cash register, and their offices in this building, bathrooms for themselves and employees, and a small retail area where they display goods that are related to what they, to the landscaping and their nursery operation. To the rear is a greenhouse and a lathe house back here. And then there is a large, what they call wood barn, with a wide opening that faces to Hillside Street, and to the rear of that is a shed in which is stored the diesel fuel tank that exists, that's been permitted by the town fire department, inspected by the state fire marshal, and a tool shed shop to there. Heights, relative heights are shown, relative area of each is shown. There's a small shed-type building here, and currently, there's a bocce court back here, which is shown to be removed. The existing, or the historic location of operations, particularly dealing with the landscaping business as it grew, was back in the rear. And there's a substantial area of paved and dense-packed gravel in the rear. If you remember the aerial photos we showed from before, a large mulch pile was located back in that area. Other equipment was stored, materials were stored, all of the activity was back here. It was loud, it was noisy, it was dusty, it smelled. It was not a very good neighbor. Current proposed conditions and drainage plan, prepared by, also by DeSalle and Burke, dated revised February 25, 2015, and I have, we can break it down into sections, there are sections that were provided, really shows what is proposed to reset the site, to buffer the operations associated with the landscaping uses and whatnot. So, starting with the area to the rear, where the operations used to exist, they would remove approximately 10,000 square feet of pervious, of impervious material, paved area and dense gravel area, and replace that with new nursery stock. Be a new nursery grow-out area, occasionally trees would be planted and removed as part of the nursery operation. They proposed to install a fence that would be 10 feet in height, located on a new retaining wall that's been installed above sort of a low level of the property. It's founded on, as shown on the grading on the plan, at elevation 184. And they proposed a 10-foot fence, which would, the top of fence would be 12 feet above the highest point on the Rowe-Johanning property line, which is at 178. There's a berm along that property line, there's a depression, and then a berm that comes up, an area that sort of drains down in the rear. All of the activities that occurred here previously would be moved. They do show some parking here, which would be for vehicles only, the, the Thayer Nursery vehicles only. At the end of the day, they would not be moved, they wouldn't be used back there, just be stored there when not in use. There is a recycle compost area exists today. That's where the dumpster would be located, and be, taken, materials periodically filled, at the end of the day, filled, unloaded by hand, so it'd be quiet operation, and then taken out between 10 and 2. The only time that they could change out dumpster would be weekdays between the hours of 10 and 2. Along, so moving operations from here, proposal is to then, and as shown, as we've shown for quite a while, is a plan to move those operations to this area. And we've worked hard to try to arrive at a, a plan that would buffer the impacts as much as we can. Originally, an earlier plan, shown at prior hearing, we had a plan that showed a direction of travel for trucks making deliveries to the site, forward-only travel. Any vehicle, any truck moving on the site would be a forward-only movement to eliminate the backup noise as much as possible, would be coming around this way. That brings the trucks to, to fairly close to the Lepore line, and particularly for the taller trucks, the 48-foot trucks delivering wood and mulch, those are 12 feet tall, you would, you would see the top of them as they came by. So, understanding that that impact would have, an alternative proposal has been, we've developed, we eliminate that forward only. As I read the OSHA regulations dealing with backup requirements, you are not required to operate a backup alarm under two circumstances. One, if there's a clear view to the rear, so for instance, for example, the Bobcats have a seat, they have an open area, the operator can see behind, don't need to operate a Bobcat with a backup alarm. And second, if there is someone who is directing traffic behind, you do not need to, to engage the backup alarm. So, most of the time, I'm not saying that all the time, most of the time, any vehicles that are operating within this area, the, their own equipment has plenty of room substantially to move circular in a forward direction, occasionally backing to a bin if they're going to be loaded from a bin, but they can move as much as possible forward or without use of the backup alarm if there's someone available to help clear the path. So, in addition to eliminating that, proposal is for a 1-foot berm along the southerly property line, on which plant, which would be planted, with an 8-foot fence with sound attenuation placed on the fence, along this length, substantially the length of the property, from a point that is beyond the east, southeastally corner of the barn, about 240 feet towards almost a Forest Street. And that would be essentially nine feet of height between the operations there and the property line. They've proposed taller evergreen plantings between the fence and the property line have offered to meet with Ms. Lepore and work with her to specifically locate whether on their property, on her property, or combination thereof, but they would be essentially 12- and 14-foot evergreens to start, which would, which would grow and perform, form sort of an upper-level visual and noise barrier above that nine-foot fence level. On the other side, when you get beyond, you need a, a path of travel between that fence and the rear of the barn. So, once you get beyond there, there's a point on here where you would, they would propose to install arborvitae and other plantings on this side, currently showing about another six or seven feet over from the edge of fence. So, a total of about 21 feet from the property line to that edge. The operations, though, would occur further away. They're proposing six material bins, essentially concrete block bins on the westerly side of the barn, three slightly larger bins along the easterly boundary of Josh's dwelling. These would be 13 feet wide by 30 feet deep by eight feet in height, and these would be 15 feet wide, otherwise 30 feet deep. And all of the materials, this, the mulches would be stored here, closer to Josh. This would be for stone, and other materials are identified. So, the low, the closest point that the bins are to the property line is 49 feet. That's shown as that setback line. So, in essence, all of the activity that would be happening here is more than, is really 50 feet or more away from that southerly property line. So, trucks that would be delivering would come in, back in, offload, and out. Trucks that would be delivering firewood separately, pull in, back into the barn, offload inside the barn, and back out. What's interesting, and tonight I won't do it, but if the board would like to see it, I'll put up either tomorrow, tomorrow night, YouTube videos of how these trucks operate, because they are quiet. It's pretty amazing. They, they're not dumps, they don't open up and bang to unload. There is this remarkable mechanism that a truck can pull into the back, open its door, and there's a, what they call a walking floor. Essentially, it's a floor that engages hydraulically, and it moves, piping underneath, moves the surface of the floor, one foot. Comes back and unlocks, and it moves it again. And the material simply walks forward. And so, very small portion falls off the back end as it goes. It's, it unloads quietly, it can be controlled, and once it's empty, out it goes. So, the larger trucks are actually quiet, and you can, I'll demonstrate that tomorrow evening when I put up YouTube video. I think I referenced a site in the materials where you could look at those trucks. So, the mulches and the wood, larger quantities are received in that way. Some of the smaller quantities are come in dump trucks that would operate more in the traditional way. The other proposal is to install, and they've actually installed, a drainage trench, which runs essentially most of the way, property line, just inside the property line, is three feet deep. It's lined with filter fabric, it's got various sized stone, it will be covered, and that, because of the berm, and the fact that all of this area drains from the Blue Hill, and the, the elevation changes, it's 196 this corner, down to 178 or 182 as you get off the property, and it keeps going that way. All of Blue Hill drains down Forest Street and in that direction. We didn't want the situation where water would deflect back off of this berm, back onto the Lepore property line. So, the idea was to capture that drainage here, bring it to two underground leaching pits here, so they would leach away. Separately, as we go to the other side, we've designed an underground system. The low part of the property is defined by elevation 182, which comes through here and back around and down. There is a lower level in here. It's more like 181 and 180 here. And so, everything on this site drains to this area. Because this is, the area is naturally pervious with all the nursery stock exists, receives it fairly well, but in high storm times, that there is a fair amount of water that sheets in that direction, and so they're going to install, propose to install, an underground cul-de-sac system, 12 cul-de-sacs, which would be filled with stone, receive and recharge water under, and then tie through a manhole here to the town's drain. Would be captured, be cleaned of any material that would be in the water, and then move into the drain system. Jim Burke, Jim DeSalle, and have met, I've been in contact with John Thompson, Joe Lynch, they've designed this, and they're working, I don't know whether they've gotten a permit yet to do that work, but they have, the town engineers have agreed that that would be an appropriate way to handle and improve a drain system now. Right now, any water that comes towards this area just comes over a wall, down onto the street and goes. So, it would be an improvement to the town's drain system with respect to Hillside Street, and it would certainly be an improvement. The combination of the removal of impervious and the, and the replacement with the nursery stock with pervious surface, the, the new drain system here and the drain system here, we think is a significant overall improvement to how the site drainage will work, and what effect, if any, how that site will now affect other properties. We also show the location of lights. There are a number of low-level lights identified in word form, and four other lights, 1,000-watt spotlights, really good size, high-powered, that are located at different locations. The two on top of the eaves of the garden shop are at about 22 feet. One faces to the north, one faces to the south across what would be the landcare yard. There's one here in the corner of the barn at about 13 feet. There's another one at the wood barn, another one at the corner of the barn that faces to the east. Those are, at also at about 13 feet. They are bright, they light the, the world up. There are three conditions that we would propose. One is that they would point them down, two, put on a cover, and three, turn them off. And at the latest, 10 o'clock. Should be, the lighting plan that we had provided shows that The lighting plan that we had provided shows that the effect of the light essentially dissipates as it gets off the property, down to one and zero candle power. That just shows the effect of the light as you get out. We know it is bright. It is bright beyond. It's highly visible beyond the property lines. That ought to be addressed. And so, the proposal is, as I said, covers, point down, and turn off. They also propose some additional plantings. I've met with the Coles, some additional plantings here. Coles are happy to force some infill, as we understand it, visually buffer what's happening. Well, that's the, I think, extent of the proposed. From a parking perspective, we show parking. This is a, generally speaking, a very, very quiet use relative to coming and going of As I said, a couple of deliveries per day of materials coming in and out, but parking, you know, I'm there often, and I'm often the only car. Maybe I see, it can be on weekend, it can be during the week, I might see one or two others. There are 13 or 16 spaces that are proposed for customers, 10 along the side as you pull in the main drive, three parallel on the other side, 14, 15, and 16, the greenhouse. Then there are 17 through 24, which are dedicated to employees. There are 24, excuse me, eight spaces for employees, but there aren't eight employee vehicles. Most of them come together and carpool, and so there are two or three vehicles generally there for employees. And then the remainder of the spaces in the rear are for sort of that in the evening, turn the equipment off, back here, out of sight. Total of 34 spaces, which we think more than adequate given the routine activities of the site. We do know that the town allows, and they do have a sort of a couple of other special events, particularly around the Christmas season, and they do get police details, and so on those evenings, the facility's fairly well overrun with parking, but it's on a one-off, maybe once, on occasion, a couple of times a year when that occurs. So, they do get police detail, they do direct for parking, try to limit where they, people can park on the side. With respect to deliveries of materials to the site, and one of the issues, there is a concern about how do trucks get there? And the first thing I want to say with respect to trucks is that there is a fairly large volume of trucks. We haven't counted all of the trucks, but there's a lot of other activity out here. Thayer is by no means the bad guy with respect to the volume of trucks. We know that there's new house under construction up the street. There's another one that's about to start down the road. There's other construction activity around. Those trucks are coming and going. Horse Farm over here, which receives deliveries and materials. There are other activities that go on, and given the way that I think Siri now operates and the fact that Milton is becoming more and more of a cut-through, more and more vehicles are coming through, and they're just finding ways to get there. But with respect to deliveries, we think, acknowledge it is important that Thayer control the activity of truck deliveries coming to and from their site and that it be done in appropriate timeframes. Bylaw's very strict in terms of what it authorized, in terms of deliveries between the hours of nine and three, dumpsters, removal and replacement between the hours of 10 and 2. They have proposed a couple of things. One is a standard set of directions, which would require that all trucks delivering to the site would come from 93 to 1, Route 28, Randolph Avenue, Main Randolph Avenue to the lighted Hillside. Take the left on Hillside, come in, make that wide turn in and into the site, and then as they're leaving, it would make that turn out, back out the other way. Forest Street ought to be off limits. Hillside Street, Chickatabut ought to be off limits. And so, they will provide every vehicle delivering a standard set of directions, telephone numbers, email to call, clear set of directions as to when they can come. They may not come in idle in the neighborhood and whatnot. With respect to damage that may occur, we know that this edge of property here occasionally gets rutted. I think this is really maybe within the town's right-of-way, but it's, it's a grassy surface. Certainly, right outside of the fence is a narrow strip between the fence and the edge of the pavement. In any event, currently, they have placed sort of larger boulders out there that obviously make it difficult for trucks to drive over, but they would propose to replace that with some hard pack. Eliminate the soft shoulder, really make it a hard-packed shoulder that's consistent with what exists along the Thayer property line, which can withstand that weight of vehicle. Similarly, would do so if there's any damage across the street. I'm not aware of any that's happening. This seems to be the location where there's the damage may be occurring, but certainly would be responsible for replacing and restoring any damage. Dust and odor. There are times, given time of year, when this is, particularly July, August, this can be a pretty dry place. And because it is a nursery, there is soils. As I indicated previously, there was a hard gravel pervious, relatively impervious surface that would get dusty, particularly in the summer. There are, and they propose to relocate, there are a total of 20 sprinklers on the property, really most of them for irrigation of existing nursery stock so that it's out there during the summer. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, this corner, one, two, three, four, five, within this area. There are currently five sprinklers within the area that would become the landcare yard, and there are some other sprinklers out here. They would propose to relocate the sprinklers that are in the landcare yard to locations at the rear corners of the material bins, as required on a seasonal basis during the drier season, would ensure that those are turned on at least three times per week for a period of 15 minutes each time. That would, and make sure that this area was properly, and then hand-spray other areas that would be susceptible to dust, that would damp the dust and contain that dust. Odor, the primary odor, I think, is really from the mulches that would go in these bins that sprinklers would help to contain that odor. The new plantings along here will capture odor that would come this way. The prevailing wind goes this way, but obviously the wind swirls at different times, but it would capture odor at those higher, the heights of those trees. Odors, we don't believe anymore odors would be leaving property in that direction, certainly not in any way remotely the way they did a couple of years ago when the mulch pile existed And I'll leave it at that for the moment and ask the board if the board has any questions.
I think that maybe we would like to hear about the drainage.
So, Jim DeSell is here from DeSell and Burke to talk more specifically about that and answer questions if the board may have.
How you doing? The, the site drains more or less this way here, and Ned spoke about the, you know, controlling the water that was going to hit the berm here by putting in this trench with a stone swale that will go into a leaching pit, and then...
Is there any way it could stem there besides the water?
The water coming, the water coming across here from the Lepore property would hit the swale, dump down into a catch basin or a drain manhole, and get recharged into the ground through a leaching pit cluster in this area here. The rest of the water pretty much flows in this direction now. Anything that's not captured by this here would get captured by this cultech system that we have right now. You can see during some real heavy rainstorms when, that have gone by in the past, and you can see water breaking through the wall. That would be taken care of with the cultech system here. There'll be some pretreatment. Then there'd be an overflow pipe into a drain manhole that would go from the, I'm sorry, from the catch basin that would go into the town system. But that would be a secondary system if there was just a torrential...
So, the cultech is designed to recharge?
Yes.
It's just overflowing into the town sewer?
Exactly. What it is, it sits on a bed of stone, and it's, it's like an upside-down plastic yield. The water goes into it, and then if it does have too much capacity, it will overflow into the system, instead of right now going through the wall and into the town, as it is. And in the drainage cowl that we've provided, you can see the pre and post-development peak flows are reduced on every storm event, and we will meet the mass stormwater management requirements. We're still working on the fine-tuning this with the town. We've talked to John Thompson, but it's not, you know, 100%. They still might want something different.
Let's assume that there's a lot of fertilizer in the water as it comes down to this system. How does this system clean it before it gets discharged into the...
Right now, the water just...
Right. It goes right over the top of the wall. It doesn't, it pours over.
I've seen, yeah, I mean, there's been, you know, driven by, you know, well, but it actually, when it goes into the catch basin, it'll be deep-sump catch basin, and then the water's actually going to go into the cultech system, and that will filter through the stone and everything else which will clean it.
And have you sized this system so that your reduction is how much?
The off-site flows, you can see, it's in the, in the report, you, in a two-year storm, you go from 8.7 CFS to 8.5 CFS, and in a 100-year storm, you go from 29, 38 CFS to 2502.
But this is, I mean, all the development has occurred before you're talking about what the production is. I mean, you've got a development that's there which is producing drainage, and you're going to somewhat reduce the amount of that, but it doesn't really address what the flow might have been before the development occurred.
Before which development?
Before the development of the nursery.
We have, with the, well, you're talking 100 years ago?
Well, I'm talking, I'm just, you know, I mean, when you do a, when you do buildings, you have to reduce the amount of water so that you have basically the same characteristics.
Correct.
And here, you're just doing what seems to be a fairly arbitrary reduction of 0.2%. What, how big is the reduction in percentage?
I don't have those exact numbers. I mean, you're, we're reducing the runoff, which is what you require, which is, and we're going to meet, you know, we meet mass stormwater management policies. What we did was, we, the existing conditions, which we're calling, which is out there right now, which is on the, you know, what we surveyed in 2012 and 13, whenever we did the original survey, we have the total impervious areas and, you know, so that's what we're basing the existing runoffs from with what literally was out there at the time. It's changed a little bit since then, but, and then what we did was we took into effect any of the changes that we had, and in most of the areas, we've reduced the impervious area. So, what we're doing now is we're collecting the water and we're letting it out in a slower fashion. So, we're reducing the runoff from, I mean, I mean, is there a percentage that you, that you would want, you know, that's...
Well, it does seem to me that you're doing this to make things better, and the question is, how much better are you making things?
Okay.
And you're the engineer.
I know what you're saying, and that, I mean, as long as we, as long as we meet the requirements of the state, the state standards.
But you can tell us what, what...
You actually, for a second, just tell them what the percentage is.
Could you also tell, could you also tell, just say what the...
No, no.
And also just say what the state standard is.
Yep.
It might be helpful as well.
What about the leaching pit? How big is that?
This leaching pit here?
Yeah.
It's a double cluster, I believe, they're six-foot diameter. You can see in the detail, it's 82-inch, with four feet of stone between them, two feet on the outside. It's a good size.
82-inch diameter by what depth?
Three and a half feet to the inlet.
And if you had three of those, would that be better than two?
Yeah.
Your third better.
It'd be, or 50% better. It just is, I mean, the question is...
They're designed on the flows, and, and, yeah.
You designed the flows to be more or less constant with a little bit of improvement, rather than designing them to try and make a lot of improvement.
Look, I can get the percentage of what the percentage is.
You said a two-year storm, right?
Say it again.
You were saying you were working on a two-year storm?
We just didn't follow.
So, those shouldn't overflow on your peak?
Nope.
So, that's how you design it?
Yeah, and it doesn't have overflow. This is the inlet coming from the swell.
No, no, I know, but I mean, it shouldn't bubble off the top.
No, absolutely not.
That should contain the maximum of the two-year storm.
Yep.
From the swell.
Exactly, just that piece that gets hit by that.
And you, the initial calculation, like you said, had more impervious land area, and now you have land area that will pervade.
Correct.
And that's, and that's the calculation you used.
That's what we based it on, yes.
A second. So, what did you get for a percentage?
I'll get you the number for tomorrow.
And if you could bring it along with the, if you could tell them what the standard...
Okay.
And what you're achieving, that would be helpful. Thank you.
And what is the purpose of the swales?
This, the swale is because we're putting the berm in to create height for the, for the fence and the, and the trees. It just gives us a little bit more height, but, you know, right off the bat. What happens is, instead of the water just coming down here and flowing like this and heading over to this corner now, we're collecting it in the swale and discharging it into this drywall system.
They assume the swell goes down elevation as it goes to the...
Yes, yeah.
And is there a swale on the east side?
There's a, there's a swale in here.
What's that for?
That just reflects the water that comes down in this area here.
And where does it go?
Over to here.
Is that, do you think that was created naturally? Is that a natural?
No, this has been, there's like a little, there's a ditch. No, this has been, there's a little ditch.
So the ditch collects the water and washes down the ditch-
Some of it, yeah.
Into the, into the collection system.
Is it an existing catch basin up there? Go on.
No, that's where we're putting that in.
There is no catch basin on the street?
There's a catch basin out on the street.
Yeah, on the street.
Yeah.
There is one on top.
There's one off top and out on the street presently.
And I assume that the catch basin on top today is just a recharge without treatment? It's just a, it's not connected to the town sewer?
No, nothing connected to the town sewer, right?
So it's a drywall.
Yes, it's a drywall.
It's a drywall.
With a pre-catch unit in there.
The CULTEC, the same as the swale, obviously goes down elevation towards the, it's not a catch basin, it's just a drain manhole.
This here's a catch basin that overflows into the CULTECs, and the CULTECs are flat.
Okay.
It's a system here, and they disconnect, and then there's an overflow.
It looks like a, it would look like a Quonset hut.
Yep, exactly. It's corrugated.
Probably with stone.
Yep, it's all surrounded by stone.
We have loads underneath.
Yep.
Does the CULTEC require maintenance?
Yes, there's observation ports.
To clean it out and whatnot for, to get rid of those sediments that are falling into the system?
Ideally, it should be relatively clean water with the hood and the sun, but there's, oh, there's inspection ports to make sure that the stone and everything else is correct.
So that would be submitted as part of the-
An O and M, yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah, your sun's collected salt.
That's how you use it, total percentage of salt.
Who said that? Of course. But you have to come up.
Do you want to?
Leave the mic here.
I was wondering that-
Identify yourself.
My name is Phil Joe, heading out of the 23 Park Road Drive. The, on the, the page where you showed that, that, when is that installed?
This?
Yes.
That's not in there.
Oh.
No. The only thing that's installed, I'm sorry, is this swale that's here now.
Right. And since the installation, we have never had flooding like we have today. Never. What you have done by creating this trench is you've created a flooding system for our yard and our house and our basement that has never been as bad as it is today. I would urge you people never to complete half a project, so that we have nothing but catastrophe every time the skies open up. And I'll give you these to take a quick look, and you might pass them around. But this is incredibly unfair, what you have done to us.
Okay, this-
Take a look at all of them. Take a look at all. I urge you, because that will help you to design a better system than exists today, because all of this runs downhill right into our yard.
See. Does the drain, does the drain manhole exist at the end of the swale right now?
No.
Alex, can I?
Well, you can ask a question, but we're not taking, you're going to have plenty of time to, but, but do ask the question.
I want to ask a question of the drainage man.
Ask him.
I just want to, this is my property here, and what has happened is you dug a ditch here, and all the water comes into the ditch and then flows over into my property. There's a berm here, so no water from here gets to the street. None. And in order to properly drain this, you need to extend the ditch or piping or something from here, because all the water ends up right here. Even when you put the systems, systems in here, where's the water going to go? It's going to seep and come into this ditch. None of it's going to go this way. I'm not an engineer, but I know gravity. You dug a ditch.
This is a new one?
Yes, this is the new dig that they, the ditch that they-
That was, yeah. And since we did the survey, the initial survey, there has been some digging in here, which we have to go back out, we can't because of the storm, and we will, we'll readdress that disturbance that's happened a few months ago.
So I mean, you're suggesting that the swale has to be a drainage swale and not a ponding swale?
I would think so, because it just sort of flows, it goes right over our stone wall into our property.
That makes sense.
And this is why we're upset. You know, you're an engineer.
We didn't, this wasn't, it's there now.
Yeah, I would like to, I'd like to comment. To be, to be fair, to the engineers who've designed it, they did not have anything to do with the installation. And to the extent that those conditions are occurring, we will certainly ask, you know, it's been two months since, it's been nothing but snow on the ground, so to test those conditions today is impossible. But we will evaluate those and respond accordingly. I think it's appropriate that we do that and do that as quickly as we can.
All right, well, that's good. Other questions about drainage, yes?
Not about drainage.
Not about drainage. Well, we, since you're probably not going to be here, are you coming tomorrow?
Yes, to give us our percentages.
Yeah.
Okay, well, then, what's, what's, what's the-
I have a question about the trucks. Seems like the loading patterns, previously, when we discussed this, there were discussions about the trucks going around the wood barn. It seems like that's been changed because of the OSHA discoveries that you made, or, but in any case, before, before you answer, if the trucks aren't going around the wood barn anymore, what is the purpose of the drive that's there now?
That, that drive needs to exist because the diesel fuel tank is back here.
So it's still used by some-
Yeah, it's used very, it will be used. It'll be used occasionally as a diesel truck delivery comes in, they will park, they will load, they'll pull around and out. And there needs to be, from a fire safety perspective, a distance.
So-
Needs to be fire access to the back of the barn for fire trucks, so we can't-
It's primarily limited to the diesel. If there is a condition saying that that was limited to diesel in emergency, that would be acceptable?
I think so, yeah. Yeah, the, the notion of eliminating that forward only, particularly with the taller trucks, was to eliminate those from the view of the Lapori property. You can see it above the top of the, of the fence. So by moving it out, they, they, they're taken out of the field of view in large trucks.
When these large trucks come in, you expect that 99% of the time, there's going to be somebody that directs them there.
Yeah, there's always-
Stop them from going around, because if I'm going to make a three-point turn, an eighteen-wheel, and I can go around the building, I'm just going to go around the building.
Yeah, until, unless, until you get around it, and you see how difficult it can be to get all the way around. I agree. But there will be someone there to receive the trucks. They generally want someone handing them a check at the time that they are making their delivery. So someone will be there, someone will be there to direct, someone will be there to direct them back either into the barn or back into the material area, which will allow them to shut off their backup alarms. In any event, all deliveries would be between the hours of nine and three, so during daytime, weekday, daytime in any event.
Could you, if you don't have it tonight, can you just find out what the frequency of the diesel deliveries would be?
Once a month.
Once a month. So just along the line of what we're talking about here, is there, is, would it be, would it be possible to put a gate there to prevent the tractor trailers from going around? Could you unlock for the diesel truck when it comes in if it's so infrequent?
We have never actually used that. Previously, trucks have never gone back there. We had only proposed that to reduce the noise, but that has not ever been accessed previously, so I don't anticipate it.
Where would you suggest it?
I prefer to do a planting coming across, just to reduce the footprint of the opening to eight feet thick, just like we had that previous wisdom privet, so our little gator could go through with the-
You're just fueling your, your landscape accordingly?
Correct.
So the bigger trucks would be dissuaded from going there because it's such a tight-
Correct. And we could do it on both sides if you felt like that would be appropriate.
You just, guy comes in in a truck, hey, watch him, he's going to go where he thinks it's easy.
We're just trying to- Okay, thanks.
There is a requirement that loading areas are not supposed to be within 30 feet of the lot line.
Well, there are now. This is the closest point, 37 feet.
37?
Yeah.
But if your truck is in the-
Truck stops, doesn't pull in here to unload. Truck actually stops here, there's a hose that comes in, the door, entry to where the-
And where do the, the vehicles get fueled?
They pull up here, and then the hose is run out through the door, here. The door, the opening to the shed is, is on the end of the shed, not, this isn't closed on that side.
So the, all of the fueling happens in this area.
We have a question.
Are the trucks-
Why don't you, come on up and introduce yourself to the viewing audience.
I am Pamela Flory, 44 Forest Street. So the trucks every day will be going there to fuel? I have other issues, obviously, but how many? So all the trucks are going to be going there and idling and being fueled daily?
No, no. As needed, a couple of times a week, each of their trucks will be fueled at this location. They won't be idling.
Cars and the trucks, all of them?
Yeah, everything that takes diesel. Most of their equipment takes diesel.
So there'll be a lot of activity there?
No different.
No, there will be occasional end of day, middle of day, pull in, fuel the truck, pull out. Truck will be turned off, it won't be idling while it's being run. You never idle trucks when, vehicles when they're being fueled. Turn them off. They'll be turned off here, and away they go.
And how many trucks do they have?
They have a total of 17 pieces of equipment.
So that's 17 pieces of equipment.
They're all diesel?
Occasionally, yeah. During the day. And those, those, those operations, the fueling operations, will continue to happen regardless of whether a permit would be done because of all the nursery activity that takes place. It's where they store the vehicles, it's where they fuel their vehicles. But this is a safe, quiet location. It can be buffered, and I think, as suggested, some additional plantings in here will further quiet the operation.
Well, you raise an interesting point. You've, you've got a, a nursery special permit dated 67. Is that when it was, has it been renewed?
67 renewed in 87.
Right, okay. So that is the permit for the nursery, which permits a number of things. And then there is, in the application, there is a fair amount of talk about agricultural use that is exempt from zoning under the Dover Amendment, which would be, the Dover Amendment is 40A, General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 3, which says that an area used primarily for growing berries and a number of other things can be exempt from certain zoning requirements. But I guess the question is, which areas are primarily used in this way, and are they used for anything else but the agricultural use? Because there has been talk that part of this operation is exempt under the Dover Amendment, and we want to know what part that is.
Do, I have a question that's relative to what you're saying.
Okay, good.
Knowing that you understand the Dover Amendment very well, is it talk about stuff that's grown on the land? I mean, is that, is that, to the intent, that some of this farmed land grown on there?
You know.
My question leads to the fact that it seems to me that a lot of the stuff on here is just brought in and plopped and planted and then plucked out and sold that isn't actually grown there.
Yeah, well, I think that-
Hasn't seeded and grown there.
I think that this is a question. If they're saying that this is an exempt agricultural use, then we should know that because-
Point being, you're not growing any agriculture.
Their point of view, their point of view is important. It doesn't necessarily mean it's correct.
I think that-
Wait, we've got, we've got another question before you comment.
Can I throw some complexity, some more complexity into this? So we have Section 2 and Section 3 in here. Section 2 of the zoning is definition of landscaping business and permissible activities. And Section 3 describes the other businesses that are on the site that exist with it. We should cover the nursery business and cover the agricultural business. Section 2, which is, you've responded to on Page 3 of your application, you've listed landscaping services and snow management services, but you don't list firewood, Christmas trees and materials, and snow plowing under Section 2. And under the zoning, those three are allowed in this permit. Now, you have them under Section 3, and I think at least fire, definitely Christmas materials and maybe firewood are also allowed under the nursery. I can't remember on the firewood. So my question to you in this, and it's a question I had earlier, which activities are you actually applying for under the special permit? And which ones are going to be under the special permit for the DBA for the nursery? And to Alex's and Mike's point, which ones are under the agricultural exemption? Because I think we need to clarify that for the purposes of discussing the special permit.
So, see if I can help answer. I, so there's, there is a fate, if you will, has reached the courts over what is and what isn't agricultural and what's allowed. And as I have my conversations, the court will decide that someday, and life will go on one way or the other. And what all of that entails will be determined. What I know is that certain of the operations that were conducted-